Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Cohasset Planning Board Meeting of May 11th, 2022. It is 6:31 PM. This meeting is held on Zoom. And the information necessary to connect is under the agenda on the Planning Board website. Roll call, please. Tom Callahan.
Tom, your audio is not connected.
No. Okay, so I'll move on then to Paul Grady.
Paul Grady, present. I was trying to fix my camera.
Okay. Amy Glassmeyer here. Tom Callahan. We can't hear you. Eric Potter.
Eric Potter, present.
Right, thank you. Mr. Callahan. We, well, we can, you can try smoke signals, but I'm not sure those will work. But we actually still have three people, so I can begin the discussion of the Large House Review. So the first item on the agenda is a continuance of the Large House Review for 90 Howard Gleason. And we will, I will ask one of the applicants' representatives who will be speaking. And if you could tell me everybody who's going to be speaking and in what order, that would be very helpful. And we can start with that.
Okay, great. It's Brendan Sullivan with Kevin R. Consulting. I will be speaking as well as Mike Tarnamela, the architect, and Sean Pappas, the landscape architect. And I think Mike is going to share the screen first. He has all the plans in a bundle for us. So hopefully it'll just be one person sharing a screen and you can bring those plans up.
Can I ask, is Matthew Blumenthal also a part of this team?
He is. He's part of our Patrick Aheron Architect, but I'll be presenting this evening.
Okay, so thanks. I just wanted to keep track of who's here. All right, so please begin.
Sure. So as I stated earlier, Brendan Sullivan with Kevin R. Consulting. He had represented the owners and applicants, John and Jamie Bureaux of 90 Howard Gleason Road. Would you go down to my plan, Mike? So we've been, we were issued a water conditions in a stormwater permit for the site from Conservation after two hearings. The, one of their main comments was the two, they wanted, I only had half of the house infiltrating into the infiltration basin onsite. They wanted the entire house in there as well as the proposed carriage house in the back. So we increased the size of the infiltration system so that it's taking the entire house and the carriage house in the back to reduce flows, rates and volumes that flow on to or out towards Howard Gleason Road. The entire site is basically, it flows from, you know, the top of the page is basically east, north is to the left. So everything flows basically to the south. Cascades down from the top of the hill behind the house through the property and onto Howard Gleason Road. The existing structure will be removed. The existing non-conforming structure with respect to side yard setback and front yard setback. So we're pulling the house back into the, into the conforming setbacks as well as adding a pool. And also the accessory carriage house will also be removed, non-conforming in the left-hand side that we've been removed and a conforming one will be constructed as well behind the house. I think that's really about it for me. If you want to get into, I think Mike was going to get into some of the architectural details.
Sure, I can take it from there. Thanks, Brendan. So as Brendan said, just kind of starting from the existing site plan, we have a pre-existing non-conforming structure right now that's inside, predominantly inside the 100-foot buffer on Howard Gleason Road. We also have an existing garage, detached garage over here that's non-conforming on the side yard setback. And I think everyone has visited the property at this point and has a sense of it. There's a bit of topography on the property as it slopes down to Howard Gleason. There's an existing house there that at this point, you know, doesn't, doesn't meet flood compliance requirements and is also in that non-conforming location. The house that was originally built has been likely added to over time. So we're looking at obviously raising that house and constructing a new property at Howard Gleason. The, we did a little bit of a study of the area and looked at some of the Butters properties, predominantly to take a look at the relationship of the lot size to residential square footage, the information that we could obtain from the assessor's cards. And we've got a proposed coverage ratio of about 12% of residential square footage on the main house portion. And we use just the main house portion for this comparison here that we've set up because the outbuildings weren't available on the assessor's card. So if I zoomed in here, just to give you a sense of the property at Howard Gleason, there's, there's a lot of surrounding properties that have some, somewhat of odd frontage and also lot size and it's a little bit of a smorgasbord of properties. But I think the one that really resonates is 76 when we talk about terms of presence on the street and also the coverage ratio. The coverage ratio at 76 was roughly a house of about 6,400 square feet with a ratio of 15%. Our proposed new house on Howard Gleason is going to be 6,600, just over 6,600 square feet with a coverage ratio of about 12%. And, you know, you could see there's, as I said, there's a couple of different ratios as we go around, but also very different lot sizes. But overall, the mass and scale as the house presents itself to Howard Gleason is not dissimilar to the house that's, you know, two doors down at 76 Howard Gleason. So I will leave the site plan and landscape plan to Sean Pappas shortly. But basically, if I could just talk about the architecture a little bit, we've, we've developed a one and a half story, you know, classic gambrel shingle style house. This is the inward portion, the north elevation, the parking court elevation. And the house has natural cedar shingle to weather gray. There's a red cedar shingle roof to weather gray. The chimneys would all be in a, you know, water struck S&amp;H style brick. Currently, the existing ridge sits at about 38, elevation 38.5. The, by the nature of the house that we've designed and also, as Brendan said, lifting the house up slightly in order to get out of the floodplain and is, I'm sorry, out of the water table. We're also looking at our ridge being at about 41.5, which is just about three feet above the existing ridge height. The elevations to the south here, again, we've got the gambrel shapes repeated with a lot of push and pull in the two dimensions. So the house itself really presents itself as being about 23 feet tall from, you know, the grade at the outside all the way up to the ridge. We've got the east elevation, which would be the long elevation going into the parking court with the main portion, main body of the house here with a carriage house piece that's attached to the house here. And we've broken down that mass and scale by creating sort of an assemblage of structures that looks like it's been attached over time for the main house. And again, this is the west elevation to the opposite side. So we did a little bit of a study on the existing conditions as well as the proposed condition from Howard Gleason and give you a sense of how the house fits, even though we're elevating slightly. So from Howard Gleason, I think it's still, you know, a very understated scale. There's a lot of, again, push and pull on the elevation. So it's not one consistent plane moving across. The gambrel, by the nature of that shape, really presents itself as a one and a half story house, which is consistent with, again, I think, the other houses that we see in the neighborhood that we're using as a precedent, which would be 76, which is here. And this house, we think, was also one of the original houses on the street. So I think that there's a nice sort of juxtaposition of a shingle style continuation down Howard Gleason. These are for pictures of 76 Howard Gleason. The detached garage really picks up on, on the same architecture of the house, albeit in a gable style. And we've continued the round garage doors as well as the dormers, all at a, again, one and a half story presence from the, you know, from the exterior. The pool house is really more of an open pavilion with a small changing room, storage room off of the back. There is a bathroom outside, but for the most part, this is really a three-sided open pavilion that is roughly 18 feet, four inches tall. The, just for a point of clarification, I know we didn't get a chance to present at the last meeting, but I wanted to just read into the record the RGFA. So for the main house, the RGFA calculation is 6,674 square feet. The garage structure, the detached garage has an RGFA of 780 square feet. And the pool cabana has an RGFA of 616 square feet. So the site plan, which I'll go back to, and I think Sean can speak a little bit to the lighting. But overall, again, we've really made an effort to break down the mass and scale of the proposed structure by creating segmented pieces as well as a lot of push and pull that I think really maintains a sense of intimacy as well as scale within a, with an appropriate scale in a architecture at this, at this RGFA. Sean, you want me to turn it over to you with the site plan?
That'd be great, Mike. I appreciate it. If you want to pull up the color site plan, that'd be great. Perfect. Thank you. This is Sean Pappas with Sean Pappas Landscape Architecture, 222 North Street, Paham.
Mike, turn the, turn the page over here to the site plan. He was describing it really well. Essentially, the structures are now compliant where they were not before. Also pulled back away from the street right of way, the 50-foot buffer and just barely into the 100-foot buffer, which was, met pretty enthusiastically with Conservation Commission last week. The driveway comes to the rear side of the house. Previous driveway came kind of all the way to the back to that detached garage, which we have a separate carriage house. We have a kind of a subtle set of wheel runs getting you back to that carriage house area with the driveway and parking court there that doubles as a recreation area in the auto court. Essentially, grade-wise access is just a little bit higher than what is there today. We'll probably get back to Brendan on some of these points and that we're going to, we want to talk about the balance of the excavation and fill there. Essentially, it's a pretty balanced site. So there, drive you back to the auto court, the driveway, access driveway is in the same location as it is today. We are, the main issue when it comes to landscape treatment itself is the large tree, large linen tree at the front of the property is being maintained. That's kind of the big key there. The other plant material, anything that would have been around there with the existing house, that's all pulled away. There is some tree removal on this property. Most of it is in regards to trees that are located right up against the foundation of the existing house. There, those are noted on our landscape plan and they're also done on this plan. A large spruce tree and a beech tree right around the front of the house, the proposed house. A Norway maple, which is in decline, will be removed, which is along the driveway area. Some trees in the rear area, another Norway maple, a blue atlas cedar and a Japanese maple as well as a horse chestnut. So we can get into those if you have some questions. There is some removal of trees based on just grading and the structure itself. We have tremendous amount of plant material going back into the property. Any of the trees you see on the property there are going to be pretty large caliber trees that you see illustrated in this site plan. And then if you look at the east side of the property toward the swimming pool area, anything in that 100-foot buffer is a native plant and we've got a native plant list. We have on the lower portion of that drawing and we have our usual suspects on there that you would find. Cedars, pitch pine, all of our typical native plants we've used for shrubs and grasses. All of those are kind of in the front yard area along the front face of the house. Then additional plantings around the sides of the pool area as well as what you can see around the auto court and going back up into the, the far rear yard. There's usually a question about lighting on the proposed lighting of anything with, with the large home review. I don't know exactly, Mike might be able to speak to the sconces that they're going to probably have on the house, a classic traditional sconce that they would typically have on the house. Most everything we do when it comes to landscape lighting is low-volt landscape lighting, shrouded path lights. And that's something we will have in areas around the pool and the main accessways. But I would say that the lighting, we consider it subtle. So those fixtures themselves are only 18 to 21 inch in height, maybe 24 inch in height. When it comes to any of the other hardscape treatments, going with natural stone, we are using asphalt on the driveway, but doing a large amount of native stone as well as granite, wheel runs, granite accent bands. Anything you expect us to do on a high-level project like this. Stone terrace for the swimming pool area, crust stone terrace for the rear terrace that actually is facing Howard Gleason. There are some retaining walls that we have on the property and those are shown, illustrated both on Mike's drawings that he has for elevation as well as on these plan views. Those would be a native New England fieldstone wood. That kind of covers for the most part the overall on the site plan. Hopefully I hit most of the high points for you. Certainly answer any questions for you.
I can, I can speak to the lighting just regarding the main house. We would have sconces as necessary at exit doors. I think we could just speak to the rear elevation just from Howard Gleason for a moment. But for example, we don't really have many exit doors coming off of that. We would have a surface mounted light under the deck here. And we would have low post lights on these. So there's really no sconces on the Howard Gleason side. We would have coach light sconces at the carriage house and at the front door and perhaps a side door at the pool. But everything else on the Howard Gleason side would really be, you know, nothing mounted to the face of the house.
One thing to note here also that I probably should have mentioned in the site plan. I didn't catch up, Brendan had mentioned it and he could probably speak to it. His impervious surfaces and handling of stormwater and surface drainage is certainly improved tremendously over previous development on the site.
All right, so thank you. Is that, that's the introduction of your presentation? So I'd like to begin with, let me make sure, Lauren, has anybody else entered the meeting since we began?
Yes, thank you. I want to recognize that our associate member, Paul Clary, has joined us. So he, if you'd like to appoint him to vote on these matters, since Eric Potter is recusing, you may do so. But also I know Eric mentioned before the meeting started that he would be recusing. So I think before you enter member comments, you should state that for the record.
All right. So when that comes to the point that it should be done, please, would you direct Eric to do so? So with that, Mr. Clary is the first letter in the alphabet. Good, good evening, Paul. It's nice to see you and nice to know you're here tonight. Would you like to begin the conversation about the property?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, I was just a couple of minutes late getting on, but I think I got the gist of it.
Oops.
Paul, you appeared to have muted yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know how I did that. Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Stationery, but I don't know what's going on. It seemed like I'm losing some reception. The, the overall lot size, what was that overall lot size?
Your overall lot size is 56,560 square feet below the required 60,000 square feet in the zoning district, it's in an RA zoning district.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think it was a great presentation. Love the design. I think, you know, they're, they're increasing, they're, they're now creating a more conforming house on this lot, whereas we were encroaching on some setbacks previously. I think it's a great design and, and a nice look and I think it would be a good addition.
All right. So thank you for that introduction. Mr. Grady, would you like to comment?
Just a question, how old is the existing house that's sitting on the property?
Well, portions of it, the main body of that house was built in 1876. There were a number of additions that were made to it over time and it's been renovated since then.
That was a shame to see those old houses go away, but it's a nice presentation and no, I don't have any questions on it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Potter?
Using himself.
Yes, I just have to recuse myself on this matter reluctantly, so I won't be making any contributions.
All right, thank you. So then, Mr. Callahan?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I didn't do anything. All right. I don't really have many comments because I don't think there's much grounds under our bylaw for me to vote against this. I'm troubled by what it's generating in the next year, that the size of this, you know, is generating ledge removal. But, you know, strictly on the large home review, by law, there's not much I can say about it. So that's, that's all I'll say.
All right. Okay, thank you. So I'd like to ask a couple of questions that relate to some of the objects or elements on the project, just so that I understand what's taking place. So there is a site that describes a square area called the Recreation Center or Court. Can you indicate what that's going to be?
So really what, what that is, Amy, is a turnaround area for the carriage house, but we want to double, do double duty on that and let it be a place for the kids to play basketball or any other sports that they want to and not be out on the street.
Okay, so you anticipate that that will be a hard surface?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. A second question, and I'm sure you have thought a lot about this, is as you know, Howard Gleason floods and, and it floods probably with increasing frequency. We haven't done any studies of it yet, but certainly the neighbors indicate that the frequency of flooding is increasing. And so any increase, any impervious surface, that which exists and that which might be applied, does raise some interesting questions about how we manage stormwater related issues. And, and there's a couple of things that I've been thinking about, which is the way that it's set up with the driveway. You basically create a pathway for water, which no, has no resistance, right? There's nothing that's in its way so that, you know, even if you had a, some kind of a hedge, it could potentially slow water moving down. But without that, you're going to actually have water path, you have a water pathway that could end up in the backyard, it could end up in the swimming pool and things like that. Have you thought about ways to mitigate that?
Yeah, so that was brought up during the Conservation Hearing as well. You know, with the flooding from the harbor and also about the driveway was certainly, was certainly brought up. And so we have, you know, as I said, we were now infiltrating the entire house and the entire carriage house into an infiltration field and our volumes and flows are less offsite than what is there, what, what is there today. We've also made note that the, the auto court, we do have a stone trench going. So we are treating that recreation court as a paved surface that was, would require treatment because there's automobiles parking and driving over it. But we've also said during the, during the hearing that we will, we will mitigate and apply the same types of trenches to the auto court in front of the proposed garage. So the, so the driveway today is in basically the same location as that, that first, that first shot of it. First, maybe 100 feet or so. And then when it turns to the, as it turns to the, turns to the right, the existing driveway goes straight up and it goes straight up almost to the, well, it goes to the back of the existing, the back of the existing detached garage, which is that red square on the lower portion of the lot. So there's much more pavement right now going directly out to Howard Gleason without any treatment at all. And so we're going to, we are, once we get up to that area, it's going to flatten out more. So it won't be, it won't be as steep at the beginning. So there'll be, what I'm getting at is there'll be less pavement going out to Howard Gleason that won't be treated.
Okay, so that's actually useful to know and an important addition to your discussions. Another point is you do have some mature vegetation that you may end up having to remove as the plan unfolds. Does anybody ever recycle trees which are mature and move them either on the site or move them to somebody else's place?
Yeah, we do. And some of that does come into timing, Amy, and how it happens and when, when the removal takes place. So it's going to be possible for us to actually pick up and move some of the plant material around the site, to be honest. There are a good handful of ornamental trees. We intend to do that. Some of the trees are too large for us to move and some of them are growing right against the foundation of the existing house and we won't be able to do anything about that in that case. But, yeah, we usually come up with a fairly long transplant list that we have and handle with the site contractor and the selected landscape contractor on the project. That's pretty.
Thank you. Another issue which has come up in a number of, of projects recently, and I think they probably will come up again, is the fact that since you are right adjacent to Howard Gleason and we know that it floods, are there mitigating measures for the residents that you can talk about that would help to, you know, you can imagine that their front yard could be full of water a lot of the time. And so are there mechanisms to essentially try to, to stop that from happening? That isn't, that doesn't require a structure?
Um, so we have raised the house from the original, the house right now is about elevation 15,1, the first floor. Flood, the FEMA floodplain is elevation 11. We originally brought it up just about a foot, but we raised it up approximately another three and a half feet to elevation 19. So the first floor is elevation 19. And as far as, you know, so that the house will be, you know, the, will be more quote unquote flood capacity because the existing structure is in the floodplain and is approximately 20, 25 feet closer to Howard Gleason than the proposed structure. So move, getting rid of that will certainly, you know, increase the flood capacity. You're increasing flood capacity, but then you're also inviting more water onto your lot. So other than putting up a wall or a structure, there's no way to, to keep that water out, you know, nor, nor, nor do you really want to at this point. So hopefully that answers your question.
It does, thank you. So the, the house currently has a swimming pool and obviously the swimming pool is going to get moved. How does that affect the, essentially the, the question of water on the site? I mean, where, what are you going to do with the structure? How does it get removed? Then what happens afterward? And I'm asking this really because I don't know what happens when you try to get rid of a swimming pool, but I think it's an interesting question. I'd like to know how people deal with it.
Any of us could probably take that out. I'll, I'll comment on it. Essentially, a lot of where that pool is right now is, I, wouldn't you say it's probably right where some of the house is going? Yeah, it's right where we have house and we have some of the edge of the pool terraces going. Essentially, you would excavate that out in the same process of which you're, you're doing the existing house, correct? And so we'll be doing other site work there and compacting. We're going to be excavating right next to it for the swimming pool. The new swimming pool, that is, that'll be aligned with the house. So it's just a part of the site work that happens when they're doing foundation work on the house. Part of the foundation of the house hits where the existing pool is now. And so it's really just the work in the site excavation that happens at that same time.
All right. And is there any intention as a result of the possibility of removing? All right. And is there any intention as a result of the possibility of removing some of the, um, ledge on the site that that would also become a bit of the fill that is necessary? I guess you're just saying you're gonna dig a bigger hole, and so you're you're basically gonna have to remove more material.
Yeah, Brendan can certainly speak to, uh, cut and fill on the site because it feels like a very balanced site. If ledge, there is ledge that is excavated at any point, it's nothing that I would say is visible from the public right of way whatsoever. It's very, very minimal. We would use it on the site. So we either in a structural way or we would use it in a wall composition, perhaps in the rear area. My understanding is, uh, uh, it'd be important for us to try to use it on site.
Right, okay, so.
That was one of the benefits that came out of our conservation process too and raising, you know, what the the revision that we submitted was really, I think, relation to less ledge removal, actually. So I think we're gonna hear about that in the next, you know, item on the agenda.
Okay, great. Um, one last comment. So in the last year or so, we've had some really important historic structures removed, and in one case in particular, uh, before anyone could even say hello, the whole thing was wiped away. And is there any plan for trying to recycle the materials within the structure that might actually have either historic value or, um, that people would actually be interested in? I know that there's, um, organizations in Boston that actually will come in and and take material that's useful, that can be stored and then used when somebody's doing a rehab of a historic structure. Is there any thought about that?
One hundred percent. I mean, so these days, you know, what's what's almost standard on a lot of these projects, and, you know, our office has extensive experience with with, you know, historic restoration and also renovation, but in most cases, what what you do is is you bring in a company like that that will salvage a lot of the salvageable material out of the house. I mean, sometimes even down to framing lumber so that it could be reused or repurposed. There's there's outlets for this. I mean, one of the wonderful things in New England, I think we've got this great network of of, you know, sort of reused places. There's one in New Hampshire that we use quite often, actually. And there's the wonderful material that comes out of older historic homes. Uh, you know, in this case, it, you know, we're not typically, we don't, um, you know, we don't really tear a house down like this without really thinking about it. And in this case, it just didn't really meet the programmatic needs, the fact that it was nonconforming. And and also what happens with a structure like this because of the flood plain requirements is that once you renovate more than fifty percent of its value, you now have to bring the entire structure up to flood compliance. So it becomes a really cost prohibitive thing, unfortunately for FEMA. I mean, I certainly, um, you know, hearts get beat when I saw the date i- initially on this house, but you know, and and really tried to make sure that, you know, your Cohasset didn't have anything in place for that, but um, in this situation, yes, to answer your question, we would really be salvaging everything that we could out of the existing structure that could be either repurposed or reused. And often, sometimes we've reused it on in, you know, in new construction. Um, you know, whether it's a null post or whether it's, you know, a mantle or a detail like that.
Great. So that's really nice to know. I that's been a question I've had in my mind for a while, and I'm glad, I really appreciate you answering um, my question. So let me ask, is Mr. Brewer here? I can't see him and I can't see, I I I'm compromised on a small screen, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Mr. Brewer has not joined us.
All right. Thank you then. All right, um, so, uh, Mr. Callahan, would you, um, sort of make a summary comment about, uh, where we are with this particular part of Gleason Road? You're muted right now.
Good thing I was muted about a second ago. Make make a motion that we, uh, make the finding that the four criteria under five point four C one have been met. And further that we approve the large home review. That's it.
I'll second it.
Madam Chair, you're muted now.
Uh, Mr. Callahan?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Colery?
Paul Colery, aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Uh, Amy Glassmire, aye. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next part of this discussion. And, um, Lauren, could you tee this up for us?
Absolutely. So the next item on our agenda is a special permit for pursuant to, um, section three hundred dash eleven of the class of zoning bylaws for land alteration for ledge removal filed by the same applicant from ninety Howard Gleason Road. So we will maintain the same speakers here, assuming that they'll be making the same presentation. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it back over to, I believe, Brendan Sullivan. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Uh, no, that's correct. Um, if you could, um, if I could maybe share my screen instead of mics?
Sure.
And Lauren, do we have sufficient people to vote, uh, members to vote on this?
Yes, you do. Um, Eric Potter will be recused for this pro- this application as well as he was accused for the previous application for the site, but you do have, uh, four voting members for this special permit here.
Great, thank you very much. So that we are reopening a, uh, a discussion for a special permit for ledge removal. This is the first time that we will have implemented this particular policy, and, um, so we're all learning. So please begin.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm having some, I can't find my, oh, no.
We can see your, your, yeah, demarcated.
Can you see that planet?
Uh, we could see it, yeah. It was there.
It was there. I moved stuff around. Sorry. Why is it giving me a hard time? Sorry about that.
Don't worry.
Is that it there?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so once again, Brendan Solomon again from Kavanaugh Consulting. Um, so, yeah, so if you could bear with me a little bit, this is kind of new to me as well. So, um, as we stated originally, um, the house was much lower, uh, and we raised the house. So originally, there was quite a bit of fill coming off of the property. Um, but now that we've raised the house, you know, that three feet, everything's, everything in the with the house area is the pool house, the, um, the auto court all came up the accordingly about three, three and a half feet as well. Uh, so now it's a much more balanced site. And the only part of the ledge we have been removed was in the, um, the eastern portion, just adjacent to the cabana and the pool for for a portion of the patio. Um, and before there was probably about, it it expanded over probably about ten cubic yards to be removed. Um, that's down to about two cubic yards. And so, like I said, the the rest of the site, we do expect to run into some ledge. And there is some exposed ledge in the basement of the existing house. Um, not visible from the ground surface, obviously, but, um, but when we do the excavation for the existing, for the proposed house, we do, and probably the the pool as well, we we expect to run into some ledge, uh, that is upgraded. So really, that's, I think that's about it.
Amy, you're muted.
Would you like to start the conversation on this based on your experience?
Who me? No, I I want to ask a preliminary question because I just looked at the town by the zoning bylaw online. And the change to Article eleven regarding ledge removal is not is not been incorporated into the Cohasset E three sixty text yet. Um, Lauren, I don't know. So I I want to make sure the applicants are looking at the right bylaw and not the way it was amended just for clearing that left the old earth removal part, and then in December it was amended again for ledge removal part. So I I just want to make sure we're all looking at the same bylaw, with the right bylaw.
Yes, I I'm, I mean, I'm looking at the the portion, the Article seven that was approved in the December town meeting. Now I realize I don't think it's in the zoning because it has not been approved by the Attorney General yet. Um, and I had that question actually earlier as well. Um, I asked the, uh, an associate attorney, and he said that that it it can be retroactive. Um, so we're kind of ahead of the game, I think. Because I don't think this would apply to the original, um, earth removal bylaw.
I I I think it applies, but I just want to make sure you were reading the correct text and not the old text.
So let let me ask Ms. Lynn, please.
Thank you. Yes, sorry about that. Um, this actually was approved by the Attorney General. We, uh, Brendan is looking at the correct language from special town meeting from December, and I have an inquiry into our E code, uh, technician to resolve the issue because typically what happens in the E code section is once it's approved and sort of in the little area, it's hidden under new laws until it gets incorporated into full bylaw text. Right now, it's in neither location, which is problematic, and I have reached out, working with our town clerk and E code to have this resolved, but, um, the applicant is working off of the correct bylaw.
Well, I I I unfortunately don't have it here with me, so I'm wondering, is there someplace to put it on the screen so I can see it? Or is it somewhere on the town website buried in someplace I can find it?
Just give me a moment and I'll pull it up.
All right, all right. I apologize to Mr. Tardemelli. You can continue, or Sullivan, you can continue.
So can I ask Mr. Sullivan, just as a quick little aside, um, do you know what the volume is of the material that will be removed? And and if you do, can you tell us how it is that you've made that measurement? Because this is the first case. It'll be important to understand on a precedence basis how it is we're measuring things.
So the volume of materials being removed from the site? Is that the question was?
Well, any any change in the existing ledge material, you obviously have to estimate something about its character, and I'm wondering if that's true, then if you've done that, and then what that means, how much are we talking about?
We're talking about two cubic yards just up here on the side of the proposed cabana. And so this is this is a, this is a picture of the ledge to be removed. Um, it's adjacent to the back of the house. Uh, do you can see that picture, I'm assuming?
Yes, we can.
Um, so it's some of this moss covered, it's barely exposed ledge up in the, there's another angle of it looking up towards the back of the house. I I think, what I think the bylaw was intended to protect was areas of ledge like this that are going to be maintained, and there's not going to be really any filling or, um, or further exposure of this ledge. And this is the ledge that's in the back portion of the property, um, that will remain in place.
The bylaw is intended to protect all visible ledge.
Right, I I understood.
Don't don't make value judgments between pieces of ledge, please.
Okay.
It looks pretty exposed to me.
So this this portion of the ledge here that is to be removed is probably approximately two cubic yards. All of this will be, this tree is going to be removed and all this, all this ledge will be, um, under fill. Because the grade is going to be being brought up for this area.
I see. And can I ask you, like, technically, when you you make this determination, uh, how do you do it? I mean, we we didn't codify a practice in the in the regulation, but it's important for us to be able to communicate with somebody.
Oh, sure.
We measure.
We do it by, we do it by grade, so by zooming real close to where that ledge is. And it's, it's, you know, it's an estimation and it's undulating, it matters how matters how good your survey is, you know? So this is the, this is the piece of ledge here that we're talking about that's going to be, it's going to be removed. This portion here will be buried because you see elevation sixteen comes down here, elevation seventeen comes up over here, and elevation eighteen comes up here. The the cabana and the pool area, see, the cabana is at elevation, call it elevation nineteen. So elevation nineteen is is, this area is going to be filled to about eighteen and a half or elevation nineteen. So, well, this is going to be filled. So wherever the, wherever the elevation comes up, the highest point on the ledge that we're gonna, that we're gonna remove to the lowest point, and we just take the average of that area. And, you know, divide it by two and say, so it's going to be about two cubic yards. If that area is, you know, say twenty square feet, you know, you just take you would take, you know, your twenty twenty square feet, and if the grade change is two feet, you multiply that by two and divided by, what you do is you divide by twenty-seven because there's twenty-seven cubic feet in a cubic yard, and that comes to about a one point four eight cubic yards. So I rounded up to two cubic yards. So there's, there's different ways you can come up with, you know, um, the amount of fill, there's an estimating portion, you can, you can put in what you call in, you don't know hydrocat too well, but you can, if you can, you put in what they call a ten, so you get all these elevation, all these contours are basically, they all have numbers on them, um, X, Y, and Z coordinates. And then you can put a plane in there, uh, you know, a flat plane, and it will tell you how much fill you would need or how much cut is required to maintain those grades, and it'll spit out a figure for you. Um, you can do that through the entire site, um, or you know, most, most of the time, you can get a general idea of, you know, doing an average grade over an area um, and multiplying it by the area and, uh, the the average grade change and come up with a, um, cubic feet and then divide by twenty-seven to come up with cubic yards.
Well, thank you. That can be something that we can actually work into a set of recommendations as to how we proceed because this is the first, congratulations for that, but we wanna, we also want to be, um, spot on when it comes to how it should actually be done. So let me ask my colleagues, let me begin with, um, Mr. Callahan, and, um, we'll talk about this.
Well, I, I mean, I I advocated for that bylaw for fifteen years. Um, I don't, I really may, you know, people may consider this an extreme position, but I don't think there's any necessity here to remove this ledge. So, I mean, I'm I'm opposed to it happening.
Um, all right, but but by the way.
Especially when, especially, you know, everything that's being driven on the site is by choice.
All right, um, but but it is the case that, um, the way the bylaw is written, it indicates that, uh, it's only this type of area that would have some regulation attached to it, correct? Because the the regulation reads the residence and, um, driveways are, um, not.
Correct. Yeah, the the underground ledge is not the concern of the bylaw. It's the visible ledge which is unique and to coacid and gives it its character, so.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Colery?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Sullivan, could you explain to the board and the committee members there, uh, how many trucks of fill would would cover the two cubic yards?
How many trucks?
Yeah.
Your your typical triaxle trailer, um, can have, um, between eighteen and twenty cubic yards of material. So this two cubic yards, I mean, an excavating bucket is measured within, you know, one or two or three cubic yards. So it's literally a bucket full of ledge.
So it's more like a pickup truck full?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. I just didn't know, you know, sometimes when we're talking about numbers and cubic yards and feet and how much removal is actually going to happen, I think, uh, you know, it's a little bit concerning, but then if you put it into layman's terms, it's a pickup truck full of stone and you're leaving lots more, uh, the ledge than we are taking away. I mean, seems like a very significant amount of ledge that's going to be removed to me, so, um, in support of what you guys have presented and the way that you've presented it. Um, and and I I don't also have the bylaw here in front of me, but I do remember when the changes were made. I think there was something referenced in there as far as scale goes and the and the ledge couldn't be or if it were six inches or lower to the grade, then it wasn't allowed removal. Is that right, Tom?
No, that was a version from fifteen years ago.
Okay, so.
The current one says, the current one regulates all exposed ledge period.
Okay, so I I I didn't, I wasn't aware of the all exposed period, but regardless, I still think, you know, the truckloads of ledge that you're leaving on the site and.
But then it becomes a pickup truck here, a pickup truck there, and then all of a sudden, you know, ledge removal becomes an endemic to the whole town, so.
All right, so we will use this, uh, case as an example, um, our first example, and log it correctly. Um, Mr. Grady?
Well, since this is the first time out at bat, we're testing out this in this law. I'm not inclined to approve that. I like the presentation. I like the house. But it's a law, and it's a law. But it's a law and it's a law, and I don't think it's necessary to remove that ledge. And it looked pretty exposed to me. As a matter of fact, when you said it wasn't exposed, that kind of threw me. So I wouldn't be inclined to approve this. I'll be quite honest with you. I liked the rest of your presentation. I think it's going to be a nice house, but this is one where I would not be inclined to go with.
All right, thank you. Mr. Potter.
He's recusing.
Dude.
Oh, excuse me, I apologize. Uh, Ms. Lynn, did you want to make a comment beyond that?
Oh, I just was going to say I can share the bylaw if that's helpful. I also have a question that may be useful for the applicant and board to consider, and the question being is that is there uh any possibility to if this ledge needed to be modified, could you maintain it somewhere on site?
It could be, yeah, we could use any stone on on site, certainly. Geno, I think a part of uh bylaw you'd have to clarify for me, Lauren.
I I thought you were ju- I thought you were just burying it. You're not removing it. You're burying. Is that correct?
No, we were not. There was discussion of removing.
Right, but I thought your presentation was all you're doing here is burying it under fill. You're not planning to remove ledge if I if I understand it correctly.
No, no, we are removing two cub- this two cubic yards of ledge. Could we use that two cubic yards of ledge on site? Yes, we could.
Yeah, but what's the area that's going to be buried?
Is it that's buried? That's buried. Is this area here, yes.
And how much is that?
Wow, that's what surface area or cubic yard? You can't talk to cubic yard.
So let me let me, is this whole area? You know, you know, there's a little red crosshatch here, but the rest of this gray crosshatch, is all of that ledge in that area getting buried or removed?
No, just this portion of the gray area here is being buried. The red portion is being removed. This ledge up here will remain the same. It will remain because it will be above elevation, you know, eighteen and a half or nineteen where where the patio and the pool is going to be.
I mean, to to me, this is more than just two cubic yards. It's you're burying other visible ledge, which is the object of protection here is the visible ledge.
But but that's not how the bylaw reads, is it?
I was gonna say that we have to be careful because I'd like to ask um Ms. Murray, our legal counsel, to weigh in on this. My reading of the the bylaw is that it is about extraction and not about um coverage.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I've I've called up the um Article seven from the December town meeting and was looking at it as well. Um, and it does talk about the alteration or removal of exposed ledge face. And I think arguably, burying exposed ledge would be considered an alteration. Or I should say the plain wood could consider that an alteration.
I do.
Can can, Lauren, are you able to share the bylaw text?
Yes, I will share. Another, just another take on this is that my question I posed earlier is if you're able to relocate it on site, that would then fall under an exempt activity. This is the highlighted, so this is the bylaw that you have. Article eleven, the yellow text indicates new portions as introduced in December thirteen twenty twenty one, so I'll I'll hover here for a minute because this is where the meat of it is.
Yeah. Um. We're we're, you know, the only the only material that's subject to being moved to another place in sight is the two cubic yards they are actually removing, but they're 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 burying a larger surface area. Um, and you know, that's not going to be addressed by moving it somewhere else. So I I I you know, I would I would I would just ask the applicant to consider, you know, it's it's relatively small area, the grade changes can't be that significant and to reconsider leaving it.
Well, we can, so we can remove that. We can remove that ledge and move it to another place on the site if you want to do that. The the part we're burying, do you want to do that?
No, you're missing the point, but you're missing the point that you that you think you need to alter it in the first place.
Well, we do because we raised the house and we raised the pool and patio and everything. Now, now we're going to have a three foot hole ne- next to the patio where we don't want to have a three foot hole. Because we have to leave the ledge exposed. There's also another part of the bylaw, which as you can see is highlighted in yellow section B down below. And I believe that's another another portion of the bylaw, which is entitled other land alteration activity special permit, which is separate from the permit that we applied for. Uh, because the all other land activities permit from the planning board for illustration purposes includes the excavation, construction of a of a structure, of an accessory building for the principal use of the squats such as, but not limited to fences, sheds, barns, patios, athletic courts and pools. So that means you can build a pool and a patio um with a special with an other land alteration special permit.
Every everything under eleven point three is now captioned other land alteration activities. There's just one special permit here. There's one special permit under eleven point three if there's going to be removal or alteration of ledge.
So what does eleven three B mean?
That should be four is what that should be.
No, they took they took out four, and they took out they took out the portion that says that you can move it from one one um, you can move the ledge from one site.
Well, because if you look at the very top, other earth removal activities include removing soil, lawn, sand, gravel, or stone. So we have, we have a set of unique rules about exposed ledge face, and then we have rules about everything else. And you're removing fill from the site.
So I'd like to um make a recommendation.
It's a it's a single, it's a single permit for all those activities.
So this, since this is our first try at using this uh element of the bylaw, my recommendation would be that we ask the applicant to think through the sets of issues that have been raised and to come back before us with a um an explanation for sort of systematically what this is the consequence is going to be. This is not a fault of the applicant. It simply is, we are working our way through like the elephant, right, and trying to figure out whether it's a tail or a foot.
Sure.
And um and since your intention is uh one, and our understanding of the application of the bylaw is um specific to the moment it was written, it would be helpful if you thought about it, come back and we can talk about it and try to figure out a solution.
Let let me let me say something in fairness, though. I mean, this is subject to a special permit and the the standard for a special permit is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, you know, I I am, I am, I said it a few minutes ago, I'm going to take an absolutist view on it, that removal is substantially more detrimental. The other members of the board don't need to agree with my position on that.
This member does.
Well, um.
So if if we can get if we can get rid of the two cubic yards to be removed and we're just filling over the ledge, does that require a special permit?
Yes. It's an alteration of that exposed ledge.
So the ledge is 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 a piece of sculpture, and it's the question of being buried.
And and this is the first permit. I I found that hard to believe that no other product in town has filled a p- a portion of ledge.
They probably, they probably have, which is what led us to pass this bylaw to stop it.
Yeah, we didn't have a regulation before this.
It's an alteration of the ledge whatsoever. That's no alteration of the of what is the ledge stone itself.
Um, stop it. You you know, let's not split here.
Stop.
The 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 point of this, the point of this is to is visible ledge has a certain quality for the town to coacid, and if you remove it by hiding it or chipping it and digging it out, it's altered. It's not there anymore, giving the uh physical quality and appearance that is what what it is we're trying to protect, so.
Okay, can we can we do this? Say we're say we're burying twenty square feet of ledge. Can we expose twenty square feet of ledge on another portion of the site?
If if you want to be creative, sure, go ahead.
Okay, that's.
I just, no, but you're you're you're, this is this is being driven by the, you know, su- you know, choices of where to put certain structures on the property. It doesn't have to happen. Those structures could also be moved somewhere else on the property rather than exposing another piece of ledge, but you, that's a creative idea. I'll I I I I'd like to see what you could come up with in that regard.
Okay, so Mr. Callahan, um, and members of the board, what I would recommend is that we uh continue this and um request that the applicant come before us with some thoughts about a solution to their objective and also to the objective of the um bylaw. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to continue until the uh applicants come up with some sort of solution or present a different solution.
We have to continue to a date certain, we'll say May twenty fifth at six thirty.
Do we have that time?
We do. Does that work for the applicants? We also have June first as a meeting date.
Um, we can, so you need you would need material by next Wednesday, correct? We could do that.
Okay. All right, so that'll be May twenty fifth at six thirty then for the board's motion.
All right, um. Thank you for that.
Great, thank you.
Hold you to continue until May twenty fifth.
At six thirty, second that motion, second that motion.
Uh, can I, um uh, Mr. Callahan?
Hi.
Sorry, I was saying, uh, Mr. Grady.
Hi.
Mr. Coleri.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you. Maybe build a fence or build a wall outside in the front of the house so that uh in fact the water doesn't come up along the land. All right, let's move on to the next item. We have a reopening of our continuance of a public hearing for another large house review, three, three, six Forest Avenue. Um, can we get the applicants uh and um those who will be speaking so I can get an order?
Uh, good evening, John Teriyaki, Teriyaki Architectural Design. And I believe Caroline Reeves from Kavanagh Consulting is here. And the homeowners, the Martinis, I believe are also here uh in case you wanted to promote them.
All right, um, Ms. Lynn, it'll take a minute.
Yes, I've just promoted Blake Martini.
All right, so who will be getting the discussion?
Um, I'll go ahead and begin, and um again, we have Kavanagh Consulting here as well for any questions.
One thing I just wanted to raise again is that the last time we met, some of the the graphics are a little bit hard to read because they're complicated and there's a bunch of layers. So if it's possible to make it distinct for us as laypeople going from one end to the other, so we know what we're seeing and we understand what's happening, that would help us a lot.
Sure, that sounds good. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Well, maybe we can start with this plan, which is a landscape plan, a simplified site plan essentially, that shows some of the big picture elements. Uh, I can go with this briefly and switch back and forth with the stormwater permit. So Forest Avenue is on our right, uh, north is up. This is uh currently uh a vacant piece of property owned by Blake and Christine Martini, who actually live next door right here. And this property has been in their family since the late seventies. And uh they would like to uh design a new house on this property, which they've been planning for a very long time for their own family. And uh the proposed layout shows the general site placement, which we mentioned in detail in our narrative. Uh, the house has an L shape and it's located towards the middle of the property. It's set back over eighty feet from Forest Ave and over ninety feet from Spinder Flane, which is toward north. So uh if you've been there, you'll remember that Spinder Flane is a is a cul-de-sac street off of Forest Avenue. And and it has kind of pie-shaped properties surrounding it. This property uniquely connects both the Spindrift and to Forest Avenue. We have uh a driveway off of Forest Avenue, a pervious driveway that is more of a formal driveway in case uh someone, you know, sees the house and wants to pull in or doesn't know where to go. But the real uh day-to-day driveway of the house that the owners will be using will be off of Spinder Flane. That's shown on the site plan. And the landscape plan uh shows uh the general elements which are the two driveways, uh some uh western cedar trees and some larger shaped trees on the property. Currently, the property is mostly lawn, so there will be minimal, if any, uh trees removed to uh build this house. I'm just going to switch very quickly to the stormwater site plan. And I know this complicates it looks complicated, but none none of this information really pertains to this hearing. It's more of stormwater data. I'm just going to zoom into the site plan. Uh, stormwater permit was approved, by the way, by the Conservation Commission. Uh, and again, Kavanagh Consulting can speak to the details if you have questions, but there will be an extensive stormwater system on the west side of the property collecting all the discharge from the asphalt driveway and from the gutters of the house. And if it's okay with the board, I will go ahead and speak to the architecture a little bit, and maybe we can come back and answer any questions about site and architecture. The proposed house, it will be thirty eight hundred and fifteen square feet total on both levels. So it's only about three hundred fifteen square feet over the limit. And we worked, we tried to get it under the limit and we just couldn't. It would have compromised the design, um, so it's it's, I would say it's slightly over the threshold for large home review. We submitted some pictures of scale comparisons. There's no shortage of large homes around this neighborhood. Uh, we provided the addresses and square footages off of the assessors. Um, these are some notable examples, and Spinder Spinder Flane itself is certainly um occupied with large homes, very large homes. So this home, we hope that will appear smaller in comparison. Uh, it doesn't sit on a ledge. Uh, it's only one and a half stories tall. The floor plan again, zooming in the L shape, so the Forest Avenue is on our right. The visible portion of the house will be this side here. So the garage on this back wing will essentially be concealed from Forest Avenue. The facade right here is the facade that will face the street. Again, it's will be about eighty feet back, and with the gambrel roof language, it's really a one and a half story house. The second floor is on the roof and dormers. This is the north facade of the house. Uh, the driveway side access from Spinder Flane. But again, the back view of the house uh showing the the French doors leading out to the back deck area. We also submitted the uh cut sheets for the light fixtures, which will be fairly minimal. Uh, we noted the sconce fixtures on the drawings. Um, and then under the porch, we noted the we're going to have recessed light fixtures or perhaps a decorative hanging light fixture, but along Forest Avenue, it was it's fairly minimal lighting. I should also note that there will be no basement to speak of under this house. The only basement area will be under the foyer right here for utilities. Uh, here's a quick foundation plan. Uh, almost all of the floor plate will be crawl space. So with that, I'm happy to um take any questions, Caroline and I, uh about the site or or the architecture from the board.
Do you want to make any comments about the landscape architecture?
So I talked a little bit uh briefly, but essentially the uh the proposed buffer trees are noted. Uh, this is an empty piece of property. There are no houses except the Martinez's own house that are close to the property, but nevertheless, we did provide a buffer strategy for all sites. Uh, on the southern side, the western cedars are shown here, and then we have some decisions shaped trees. Um, maybe an ornamental tree over here with some decorative shrubs shown and noted on this plan, so this will be the main guideline. Um, other than that, there will be no extensive hardscape of any kind. Uh, the deck will be pervious. A small walkway is shown off of the pervious driveway off of Forest Avenue.
All right, thank you. Um, let me begin with my colleagues. Um, Mr. Callahan.
Well, since this is new construction, I want to make sure we cover art, you know, Article eleven of the bylaw that we just talked about in the previous application. What's the total lot clearing that's going to be done? I mean, do we do we have any picture of existing conditions of this property?
Um, I believe Caroline, did you have a photograph? There will be no tree clearing to speak of uh because the all of this area is currently lawn, lawn space.
It is. Actually, I'm sorry, I don't I could try to pull up the stormwater report that were in that, um, but I could describe the lot. It's essentially all open lawn now.
But I could describe the lot. It's essentially all open lawn now, except with some perimeter trees. There is one slotted for removal towards the center. That's a little hard to see here. There are some perimeter trees, but I, I could try to go into my files and open one and come back, but it's primarily an open grass lawn.
So it's already been cleared in his grand.
Yes, he mows it. Mr. Martini regularly mows it. It's a big clear spot. Yes, it's grass.
One of, one of the rare times we'll have something like that, but you have, have to ask because it's new construction. And what about any exposed ledge?
None.
Zero on Forest Ave and Spindrift, really?
None that we, nothing significant, really. I don't know, Blake, if you could speak to any, we didn't map anything. It's really an open lawn that it's essentially, it's like a grass field.
Then you dodged, then you dodged, you successfully dodged the new bylaw.
I know, thank you. And no, no material to be removed in this. We'll be adding fill, actually. I don't know if you, the topography lines are complex to read on here, but essentially the lot slopes a few feet down from forest. It's almost like a little basin, so we're gonna level it out. There'll be fill added.
All right, now that's, I appreciate, John, that you did the scale of the neighboring properties. We need, we need to make that a regular occurrence for these things, so. Thank you. I have no other questions. I'll prepare to vote affirmatively for this.
All right, thank you. Mr. Colery?
Thank you. Sorry, just getting denigrated, but John, I was very dialed into your presentation. I thought it was great. And congratulations on finding the only site in town that's just a grassy field. So I have nothing else to add either.
All right, thank you. Mr. Potter?
I have nothing else to add. I'd be boned to approve this, our joint review.
All right, thank you. Can I just get a, just a summary to what your interaction was with the Conservation Commission, just for completeness of the record?
Certainly. We submitted the stormwater permit application within maybe a week of the large home review. And there were a few comments. Charlotte and Conservation Agent is providing preliminary reviews. And we went before the commission twice. Basically, the comments included two additional test pits on what we had directly under the infiltration system. We moved some things around. So that's test pit three and four. Some more information to the plan that Conservation would now like to see. Some stockpile areas that are designated. They asked us to designate that large trucks enter from Spindrift Lane. They asked us to designate a washout area for the trucks during construction. And also to add some notes under just notes on the plan, specifying the film material and vehicular entrance during construction. So they were all pretty much construction-related. They didn't affect the position of the house, any of the layout or the elevation. So it was more detail work. They want us to look at the infiltration system in closer detail, which we did. And I think that was really it.
You're muted, Amy.
That's that. Thank you. So I live around there and I drive by all the time, so I want to make sure I didn't miss anything. So are they going to be removing the existing structure?
There is no existing structure here.
It was, so it's the lot next to that.
Correct, correct. The Martini's own both lots.
Both of them. So they will keep the existing residence and they'll be building a new one?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any further comments from planning board members?
Well, I didn't make one yet.
Thank you, Mr. Grady.
It's a nice presentation and you did find a lucky lot there, but I'd be willing to approve that, provided there is no exposed ledge and that's shown. And there's nothing that needs to be altered in any way. And other than that, I'd be willing to approve it.
All right. Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we make the findings that the requirements of section five point four C one have been met. And that we approve this large home review on the representation that there is no jurisdiction under Article eleven, which is the land alteration bylaw, as Paul has just suggested.
All right, thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Callahan?
Hi.
Mr. Colery?
I'm not, I'm sure, I don't think you need me on this, but I'll, I'll, I'll vote to approve.
No, okay.
Mr. Potter?
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let's move on to our next item. So we did really well on time there. We're moving quickly. So the next item is a continuation of a public hearing for a large.
Hold, hold, hold on a sec. We, we had a hand up amongst the attendees. I don't know if that was for this particular matter.
Okay, I didn't see that. Lauren?
That's our architect for our next hearing, actually. I'll bring her up now.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. So we are continuing the hearing for forty-four Little Harbor. And could the applicant please, for a large house review, and could the applicant please indicate who will be speaking?
I will be. Can you see me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay, great.
And, and anyone else will be working with?
Yes, Sean Pappich, landscape architect, and Jed Hansen will be speaking. Sean will be reviewing the landscape architecture for the.
All right. And one thing that we would ask is, as you make your presentation, if you would please give us an update on the boards that you have been in front of prior to visiting with us, that would be helpful.
Excuse me, may I enter?
Ms. Lynn?
Sorry to interrupt. We do have, Sean Pappich is still here. He just needs to unmute and start his camera again. I see Jed Hannan in the attendees. I'm gonna request to promote to panelist, but he'll have to accept it to rejoin the meeting as a panelist. And finally, I wanted to note that Clark Brewer just joined us, so I'll bring him up as panelist right now, but I wanted to announce that for the board.
Thank you.
Clark gets a tardy today.
Say again, Tom?
Clark gets a tardy today. Not what they give out at school?
So let's, let's begin.
So can I share my screen? I'll try to do that. There we go. Can you see this? Can you see the?
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna try to bring this up because I think this is probably the best way to show. Again, I'm Sally Weston from Sally Weston Associates, and Sean Pappich will talk about the landscape and Jed Hansen, the engineering. Rich and Jackie Whalen have bought this property on Little Harbor Road. It's a, it's a beautiful spot with beautiful views. It's, it's quite a rambling footprint, and we're not here to take the house down. We're actually here to look at adding on to the house. And I think this site plan probably explains it probably the easiest. And I will show pictures and things, but the existing house, the, the rear of it, as I go around here, is all existing. This wing will stay. This wing will stay. And the garage that is right here now, which I'll show you pictures of in that red, is quite a small addition. And it doesn't meet any kind of setback. So what we're proposing is to take that down and move it forward. And you will see that it also reduces a huge amount of pavement, which Conservation was quite happy with. We will be adding an addition to the front of the house, eleven-foot addition here. And just kind of a glassy connector to the new garage. There's an existing deck in the back that connects to the existing screen porch. And we are planning a screen porch back there with a deck above. And then a small pool that Sean will talk about. These are the, some of the pictures of the house. It's a shingled house. You can see in the middle, it's, it has quite a small addition with these large additions that have been added over the years. So I think my best way to present this is to leave this small, and hopefully you can see this all, but this is the middle part of the house that we propose to take down and add eleven feet to the front of it. We think that this will help balance the house. Right now, again, these two additions, which are quite sizable, were added, and we feel that this will kind of ground the house. The garage is undersized, and again, it doesn't meet any kind of setback. So we're proposing to build a new garage with some space over it. The cupola will stay. This addition stays. This bay is taken out. Windows will change. But virtually, the, the footprint of the house stays pretty close to what it was before. We have kind of put the, the garage straight on, and again, Sean will be able to talk about the landscape. And he, he's so improved everything by changing the direction rather than the garage doors coming at the side with a lot of pavement in the front of the house. The driveway is now coming straight in, which leaves us a lot of green space in the front. In the back of the house, this addition stays, and the screen porch stays. This addition here stays, and the link, again, we're just changing some windows. But from the back, I, I think it virtually stays very much like it is, except we're creating this sort of center two-story addition in kind of a Greek revival style. Again, we're going to have a screen porch and a deck above that, two bedrooms. I should also say that right now, the house is a one-bedroom. There's a one, one bedroom on the first floor. The remainder of the bedrooms are in the basement or lower level. They do have nice windows, but it, it does feel sort of like it's the basement. So that was really the reason for adding this two-story is the clients, for one, wanted views. And for second, you know, being able to create a couple bedrooms that have better views and are kind of out of the lower level. So we will be adding two bedrooms here. There'll be a master on the first floor, and then the three little bedrooms in the basement or lower level will become two bedrooms and a sitting area. Show you the so again, this wing stays, and this connector stays. This wing stays, and we're adding this part on a new stairway. And then this sort of link to a new garage that's, again, getting it out of the setback. This kind of gives you an idea of the, the sections of the house. So this is the middle portion right now, kind of a little cake shape. And this is the kitchen addition. So what we're proposing is this center sort of Greek revival addition with the front portico and the rear porch. We are adding, the, the existing house is about thirty-six hundred square feet on the first and lower level. And with the second floor and the space over the garage, it will be about fifty-one hundred square feet. That, the garage, over the garage is about six hundred and twenty-two square feet. And there is some attic space. There's not a lot that is actually seven feet, which is required. But it's about two hundred and thirty-three square feet for a total of about fifty-seven hundred square feet. So I think, we feel that, you know, from a, a design standpoint, it certainly, you know, fits in with the neighborhood. Lauren, I did send photos. I'm sorry, I don't have it in this presentation, but I did have photos of some of the neighboring houses. And again, you know, especially this is on a dead-end street. This sits sort of low to the rest of the houses on the street. But also, when you look at photographs of the houses on Little Harbor, this seems pretty, you know, settled, because a lot of it is, is one-story. So it's really this addition that, you know, will, will change the rear of the house. But we feel with the porch and things, it really makes it quite settled. So again, we feel like the, the house really does sit in with this kind of centric classic architecture that it will fit well into the neighborhood. And I think Sean can talk about the landscape, because I think that's made a, a huge impact on the, the property again in reducing a lot of pavement at the front and creating a real sense of front entry, which right now, as you can see, there's really no sense of front door on this house, and now we are creating a real front door.
So thank you, Ms. Weston. A couple of introductory questions that would help me understand, and I think might help the board. And the first is that the, the diagrams that you're presenting are not signed. And we typically expect that the architect or the engineer is going to have signed the documents.
Okay.
And so am I missing the, where your signature is?
On the, on the drawings, we do not sign them, so.
Okay, so, so typically, at this point, this would be something that would be a, a stop conversation and, and go back to that point where we get a signed document from you. But we'll continue, but I just want you to realize that that's really important to us, because that signifies who's responsible and, and also some sense of the ownership of the ideas. The second issue is, is before we go forward with talking about the landscape, it would be helpful if you would inform the board of what your conversation with the ConCom has been, because it's a very unusual site. And clearly, everything you do about it is going to have an impact. So if you wouldn't mind starting there before you talk about the landscape, that would be great.
I, I think Sean could probably answer that better than I can, if you don't mind.
That's great.
If you could scroll to the site plan, again, the color rendered site plan, that would probably be. If that works out.
Here we go.
Yeah. So we have been to Conservation and we're heading back to them next week. Conversation with, with conversation, excuse me, conservation, conservation, I'll have to just change a couple of letters, don't I? Were only outstanding questions about the soil evaluation and the level of seasonal high water. That's something that Jed Hannan can get into here in a second. But that's really the outstanding question on the project. Other, I know one of the towns, I think Merrill Engineering is gonna come out as peer review and take a look at the test pits and see where we think seasonal high water is. There's some question as to whether or not it's higher than where Jed Hannan, the civil engineer thinks that it is in their perception. So there was some, some question as to whether or not it's down at eighty-two inches or if it's up higher. So that's really the only outstanding question right now. As far as the landscape plan, that's essentially been approved for two weeks, or two hearings. We're just waiting on the, on the drainage system to get finalized, which we think will happen in this next hearing. I don't know if that helps with describing the Conservation Commission position in that way. In terms of this, this is where the Conservation Commission's supplemental plan you see here. So this is what they saw too, and essentially what we did. And if you scroll up a little bit, Sally, I'm not sure. You might even be, I'm not sure if you can actually get a little larger, if you can max, maximize it. But then, either way, as long as we zoom in a little bit, we'll be good.
Yeah, okay. Sean, while you're, while you're talking about it, can you describe the site? It's a very unusual site.
Tough, it's a difficult site. It's, it's sloping from the entry. Of the lot, edge of the cul-de-sac, all the town. To the edge, which essentially you call it north. All the way to the ends, it, um, the house itself is situated on the ridge essentially and has been for. However, long the house has been around, I forget what year that was built. And.
Seventies.
Okay, so it, it slopes down to the edges essentially, all to the north, the east. And the west. And from the street and, and slopes down several feet down to the house. Currently, very large driveway, which we have an outlined in red also on this plan. A large driveway that kind of swallows up that front yard. Exactly. And it goes all the way back behind the existing, existing garage, uh, to the side of the existing garage, which is some. And what, uh, in this small addition coming forward, Sally. What was, I think, met with enthusiasm by Conservation Commission. Was in the zero to fifty foot buffer. We're actually reducing the square foot of impervious surfaces and it's primarily because of how large that driveway is. We're increasing them slightly. About four hundred square feet in the fifty to one hundred foot buffer. So in total, we're only about two hundred square foot on this overall addition that we are. Adding an impervious. And that's primarily, it's, it's mostly asphalt that we're getting rid of and that's also. The way we design hardscapes anymore, they're, they're virtually perme- permeus, pervious, excuse me. In that we do crush stone and chipstone setting bed. So it's a kind of a win-win. On the property, which may or may not be real important to you in terms of volume. But the amount of planting that we're doing, anything you see highlighted there with the planting symbol and green. And it's a lot of taking out of lawn areas or invasive ornamental plantings. And wrapping all the way around the property. You can see these pockets that we're adding back in. You can see the big ledge in the back behind the house. You see that also, also some ledge at the bottom, uh, all the way in the far north side. You can see these pockets of green that we're adding back into the existing vegetation. So we're, we're adding back about two thousand square foot of mitigation plantings, native plantings. When there's really actually no mitigation required. The large tree right behind the house, the large native hackberry tree that we're preserving. Pool itself, it might be deceiving, we're using a precast plunge pool, which is, is essentially kind of a, kind of a double sized spa. So it'll be craned over the structure. There won't be large excavation. Vehicles will be much smaller coming around to just excavate in a small area. Much, much smaller than a, than an actual full-sized pool. That is staying outside the fifty. On the entry into the property, there is. Oh, beautiful magnolia tree to the left of the driveway. That is remaining and it's being crowded by Bradford pear and we're getting rid of the Bradford pear. And there is a kind of misshapen cedar right next to the proposed driveway and a white pine there to be removed. But we're adding back a large red maple, native red maple. In that composition as well as some other service berry trees, cedar trees all around and some hollies. Uh, so that was, I think, met with some pretty strong enthusiasm from Conservation Commission. Treatment right at the front again, instead of being driveway, we're going to have. A little more of a formal walkway to that front entry using brick and stone. As well as some crushed stone parking areas, we're moving even more asphalt, do some crushed stone parking. To also be formidable. Terms of any. Lighting, same as we were discussing on previous projects, just low-level pathway lighting. All. Low voltage LED lighting. And that will be in areas of approach to the house and some select areas around the rear terrace. Covers the bulk of it. Again, native plant list is certainly on here. If you're interested in seeing our, our usual suspects there between the red maple, the service berry, the holly and the cedar. Pink fairy, sweet gale, bayberry, beach plum, Virginia rose, pear wood by Burnham. So we're using all of our. In the areas along the edges of the top of. It's the house actually in the back there.
All right, thank you. Do you have actually a lighting plan?
We have, we do have a lighting plan.
I looked at it and it was really hard to see because of its scale.
Actually, we do have a lighting plan and that would have been sent in. In March, we do have that on there. If you've got that.
Yeah, it's just, I, I guess this is just a comment, which is that it's, it's hard to read. It's, it's very, very micro scale. So thinking about the future, it'd be really worthwhile to imagine how. We can be, we are as board members can see better what it is that you're talking about.
You're saying the lighting plan is difficult to read or the master plan? Did submit a lighting plan.
Did, and we didn't get a chance to talk about it last time, but it just is, the way it's populated, the site is quite dense. And when we're trying to figure out what are we going to see? Because it's actually not the people on the street that are going to be concerned. It's going to be the people, of course, who live across the water. That are going to be very concerned. Okay, so let's begin then with the planning board members. Welcome, Mr. Brewer. And would you like to begin?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry I was late. So, you know, what's, what's interesting about this project is the, the, the massing of the existing. Structure. One of our criteria. For large home review was, was definitely problematic in looking at the. Existing, existing conditions and. And the applicant has done a, I think, what I'd call an excellent job of. Of moving the cars away from where people are. And giving the, the, the site, the house itself some sense of substance and, and identity. I, I think the massing is substantially improved. With what the, what the architect has done. And. I didn't hear whether there's any spotlights. Sean indicated there were pathway lights and low, low, low volt voltage lights. If you could just confirm that there aren't any spotlights shining, shining into the neighbor's bedroom window, that would be great.
No, I, I think on our drawings, we've tried to show where, you know, sconces would be, everything would be very low. Low light, you know, around the house. Again, Sean's landscape lighting, but you know, this elevation. You know, we can, we've shown where some of the sconces are. And then even in the back, they would be under the porch, very quiet, you know, something that, you know. Carriage lanterns that.
Those definitely seem appropriate, especially if the, the lamping isn't a bright white LED. A nice warm, low-level lighting is, is important. I think one of the, the points that. Ms. Glassmeyer made about being seen from a distance. Is, is an issue, so I appreciate that attention to detail. This is a spectacular sight, but that, one that can be seen from, from a great distance. I think the, 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 like I said, the massing, what Sean describes for the, the vegetation, the circulation. All the criteria that we have in the large home review have been addressed, I think, in a, in an excellent, excellent way. I. I will also confirm the, the point that Ms. Glassmeyer made about. About signing of plans. I, I don't think we have a requirement for signing of plans, but we do require a certification of. The residential gross floor area or RGFA. But that usually is most important when somebody is, is very close in area. For triggering a large home review and because you're doing a large home review before the planning board. I think that's relatively moot an issue, but it is good to have the, have the numbers and, and a certification would be required. Especially if you were trying to not have a large home review. So I feel, I feel very satisfied with the presentation and. I certainly would. Recommend that the board consider. An approval without conditions.
Clark, one thing I wanted to mention to you, you asked about the uplighting and I didn't, I didn't specifically reference that, but it is on, on our mast. We have some small local uplights, you know, an ornamental tree that kind of sits just to the right of the front door. Things to our day tree, we're trying to preserve that we think is a nice little. Kind of accent essentially of small ornamental tree. So we're going to uplight that. But that's tucked in the little niche there right by the front door. I think it'll just.
I think that's far enough away from the, from the abutting neighbor to the south, which would be a hundred and sixty-something feet. And the other neighbor to the, to the southwest, which is eighty or ninety feet. That seems like a, a reasonable distance.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Brewer. If you're finished, I'll move to Mr. Callahan.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'm always concerned about the first criteria, the scale of the buildings. If I do my math correctly, this building is getting eighty-four percent larger. I've seen your photographs of comparisons, but they neither have addresses or square footage, so they're kind of meaningless. So. If this is Little Harbor, if these houses are on Little Harbor Road, I would be prepared to vote for this, but I really want to see that data before I do. If we close the hearing tonight, we have fourteen days, so I'd rather, you know, if we close, I'd want to postpone the vote until. Twenty-fifth because I just don't have this data to make that finding.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. And I am going to ask Mr. Colery to. Make a comment since he's been with us in the minute, at the meeting since the beginning. So, Mr. Colery.
Chair, we may have lost Mr.
So that's, that's fine then. Let's move on to Mr. Brady.
Ms. Weston, you've done an outstanding job. You've had quite a bit of character to this house. And I would make a motion to approve that, or I would approve with the conditions that Tom laid out. Just comparison in the mask, but I do think it's an outstanding job you've done.
I'm asking that we not vote on approval until we have that data. We can vote to close the hearing.
That's what I'm saying. I would go, I'm asking for the same conditions you're asking for.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brady. Mr. Potter.
I believe we have also lost Mr.
All right, so, so I am. Willing to go along with what has just been said by Mr. Callahan, but I will say. I really appreciate a hand-drawn piece of architecture. I mean, it is, it is extraordinary and it's very rare, but from the technical side of things, we really actually have to have it be. Up to the standards of the mechanics of architectural design today. And the reason is because if anything goes wrong or somebody decides that what was said isn't true. We are also a part of the, the, the trail of confirmation. So thi- this doesn't really stand as a full-blown. Design standard rendering and we need that for your file and the, for the people who you're doing this work for. And so I would ask that. That it be converted into something that has a standard format. And, and what I mean by that is. I mean, the, the numerical representations of the sizes of the spaces are, are hard to see. And that's important because that's how we make this decision. It, it, using standard typeface, that's important because that means anybody can read it. So these materials I feel are beautiful, but I also feel that it's our responsibility to have something that's going to. Kind of conform to the documents that we have to have in the files that we. Produce. So if you can do that, that would be really helpful. And I think that's in alignment with. With what Tom is saying because looking at that, this, this set of renderings, it's decontextualized. So I can't tell, it's beautiful, but I can't tell how it fits. So if you can do that for us, that, that's, would it be appreciated and it does require a signature?
I'm just trying to understand what you, I mean, are you saying that like things like this need to be in typeface or?
It needs to be standardized because that's, that's what we work with. I mean, we work with.
I mean, these are all to scale.
But, but if you, if you look at it from the, what do we, what we use are rulers. And metrics and measures and those kind of things. It's not that it's not a, a great. Example of architectural rendering. It's that if you were to take it to a builder. How it looks is not going to be necessarily what actually works for them as a plan.
Well, we, we always put more than enough dimensions on our drawings. You know, all the, all our floor plans are to scale. The drawings that you're looking at are at scale, eight scale. So.
I like, if you want to zoom in, if you want to zoom in on those a little bit more.
I mean, I've looked at them really carefully. I blew them up as far as I could. And you have to remember, we're looking at them through a computer, so it's, it's not the best material base, but. From the standpoint of what we see in the files that we have. That we have standard formats.
Well, we don't, we don't use CAD, we still hand draw in our firm, so. And I, I can tell you that all the contractors that we work with are very appreciative because our drawings are very accurate. So are, are you saying that all these drawings need to be CAD then or?
What I would say is that for, for. For somebody who's not used to seeing hand-drawn architectural rendering and who is. Expecting to be able to come back twenty years from now and utilize this document for. A legal purpose, for whatever purpose, we, we have a standard format and, and we, it's basically. Necessary for people to be able to work from it.
But people hand, I'm sorry, I, but people hand drew for years.
We almost never receive something as beautiful and as elaborate as this is, but when it comes to. Zooming in and trying to see it, you know, on a computer screen, because that's part of what we get, it's really tough.
So you, you find these drawings not very legible?
Aspects of the drawings not legible. It's not that I don't find. I can find my way through it, but the question is, can it be? More clearly generated so that it is consistent with what we see in our files. Mr. Brewer?
Uh, Grady asked, raises hands first.
Can't see him, sorry.
Amy, I, I kind of beg to differ. I think a little bit of old school architecture is a fantastic thing. And I think that Ms. Weston's brought a heck of a presentation. I agree with everything that Tom said, but I, if you're looking for something that's just. Cut and dry and done by CAD, then, you know, I think you're looking at the wrong architect. They've got it down to scale and normally I don't differ. I like the finer points, the ledge and things like that, but I think the houses. And the plans are laid out quite, quite nicely.
I'm not disputing the house or the plan per se. I will say that it's hard to actually. Get a sense for the scale of this because of the fact that. It is. The typeface is not that clear. I mean, it's a beautiful, it's not, it's not about the picture. It's really about the, the, the mechanics of what one sees. So Clark Brewer, please.
Yeah, Ms. Glassmeyer, the, these drawings are superb. They're, they're to scale and the drawings themselves represent what's being done and planned. As far as.
As far as I can say, as a a registered architect of thirty-plus years. A builder can build from them and the 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 plans are dimensioned. If they're not used, if if you're used to seeing CAD drawings with some kind of Helvetica text. I I I think that hand hand lettering is, the hand lettering is is very clear and readable. It may not be what you're used to seeing in the large home reviews that we we have from other. Other applicants, but I would not ask the applicant's architect to put these into CAD.
I'd have to second that.
And and Amy, with all due respect, we, I I don't think we have a CAD requirement. Now, going forward, you know, on the working group, working on regulations. And one of the things I'm thinking about working on is like a uniform set of plans, so all the boards are dealing with the same standards, same scales. You know, and and maybe. You put in a CAD requirement in the future, CAD-generated drawings, but. I I I would defer to the architects on this one, you know, and it's the same like. I may format a doc, a legal document in a different way than Carolyn does. It doesn't make it wrong. I use, sometimes I use a font one way, I use a different font for a different thing, if that doesn't make it wrong. I I think that you're, it's an expensive proposition and not necessary to the objectives that we have here and. Again, we don't require it anywhere, you know, regulations, so maybe we consider it, but I don't think we can impose it at that at this juncture.
Well, the the intent of the large home review is to unveil a house before it's the construction starts. And deal with some of the specific criteria that we've outlined. From a regulatory standpoint, it's 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 essentially a way for the neighbors to see what's going on. Ahead of time and to make sure that the planning board has eyes on it, to make sure that there aren't any. Irregularities in terms of what we see for zoning issues. And I don't see any zoning issues here, and I feel the criteria has been handled, the representations of the design are to scale. And I I certainly would would not before having a CAD requirement. The PDFs that are on the town website for this application. They're they're perfectly legible, understandable. And I think the applicant has done a superb job.
Thank you for that. I appreciate your comments. I would ask that the architect sign the documents. That is what we've held other projects to.
Okay, yes.
And again, it's not about the aesthetic. They're beautiful. The question is. In the future, when somebody goes back and looks, what is it going to mean? But I'll leave it at that. So can I get a motion, please? Tom, is that what you were going to say?
No, I was just going to move to close the hearing. I want to see the data. I mean, I I'm not, I don't expect to be surprised by it, because if those pictures are houses on Little Harbor Road. Fine, but that just, I don't have the data to make the decision under C one A, so.
Just just one point, Tom. I did pull up the the aerial photography on Google to look at. Other houses that are immediately around this. And it the existing house certainly. Looks quite a bit smaller than than adjacent houses within three hundred feet.
And it's growing, and it's growing by eighty-four percent, which is substantial.
So so.
Yeah, but it's it seems like it's in scale with the the houses that are around it.
I suspect that that will be the case, but it's it's not for me to look it up on Google Earth. It's for the applicant to get to supply us this information. And the photographs are great, but I don't know where those houses are, and I don't know what their their square footage is.
And we do require it of all of the projects. So would you like to make, well, let me see, Clark? You made a motion and so do I get a second? All right, let's get a second motion, please.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing. And prepare to vote for this on May twenty-fifth at six thirty. Subject to receiving the criteria about the relative scale of this building compared to its neighbors.
Madam Chair, could I just weigh in on that before you vote on the on that motion? Yes, you may.
And you can certainly go ahead and close the public hearing, but you are asking the applicant to submit additional information. And if you want that information to actually be in the record of this hearing, I would suggest that what you do is actually continue. Receive that information and then and vote on this application at your next meeting.
All right.
I amend my motion accordingly.
Can I get a second? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Mr. Callahan. Mr. Grady. Amy Glassmeyer, aye. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
So let's move on to our next item, which is forty-six Hobart Lane. Large House Review. Can we get the? Name of the presenters and the applicant?
Yes, it's, well, Brendan.
Brendan Sullivan again from Kevin R. Consulting, here with Sally Weston and Sean Pappich. Architect and landscape architect, respectively. The applicants are not on board. They are they are away this evening.
Right.
If I could share my screen.
It appears that. It appears that we just lost Brendan Sullivan.
Okay. So is there? I don't want to have to push the responsibility on to someone else, so we'll wait just a minute to see what happens.
Chris.
There we go. Mr. Sullivan.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Hit the wrong button again. I hit leave instead of share. Okay. So forty-eight Hobart Lane, this is at the end of Hobart Lane, the the turn near the end of the road is right here. The the right of way does go straight down to the water, but it's it's mostly unbuilt. The the paved way comes down and makes a left-hand turn. This is the first house on the left. Existing conditions, single family home. Turn circular driveway in front that extends to the southern portion of the lot, garage under on the southerly side. There's a wood deck in back and there's a coastal dune in back. We've been to conservation. They've issued an order of conditions and a stormwater permit. There is a floodplain that floodplain is a velocity zone out in the middle of the coastal dune. Then it's an AO, which the AO, the FEMA put a ring right around the house. To take the house out of the floodplain, this is Zone X within the house and the adjoining property. And also, the AO ends just off property, boat boat mid-street and clips the corner of the lot. On the on the front of the house. So what we're proposing is to take down the, take down the existing house, reduce the, reduce the. The overall impervious for the entire site is being reduced by approximately a hundred square feet. And we're doing that mostly in the front by reducing all the the exist, most of the existing pavement. There's a small auto court. We're going down to one curb cut now off of Hobart Lane instead of the two. Proposed garage. Dwelling and then we have a, we have an impervious patio in the back with a screen porch. And also a small plunge pool on the southern portion of the property. The initially, the the, we had some materials inside the fifty-foot buffer, but those were changes made by. The recommended by the Conservation Commissions. We pulled everything out of the fifty-foot buffer. We're now compliant with. The Conservation Commission. As I said, they issued an order of conditions as well. I think that's really about it. I can show you the. Landscape plan. There's landscape plan, maybe Sean, you knew a little more depth, but some ornamental trees in front, shrubs in the front, maintaining the existing. Trees on the northern side and the southwest corner, really as far as tree removal, really just some smaller landscape trees within the lot. And I think that's about it.
Actually, this is probably a good site plan to start off with for for Sally to. Begin discussing the house itself. Would you say Sally, is it good for you to start with a site plan here?
Yeah, yeah, I could.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Yeah, if I could share my my screen, is that possible?
Let me stop.
Oh, here we go. So. Initially, we had looked at renovating this house with the with the rear dance. But honestly, they've had some damage over the last few years with water, you know, storms, not surf, but. And the the circle that Brendan discussed kind of set how we designed this house. Really had to fit within that that compact circle. I'm going to state right now that I do not have addresses and square footages of adjacent houses, which I will have to get you. But the this, these pictures right here are some of the adjacent houses, you know.
I'm sorry, Sally, we're not seeing your screen. If you're trying to do a share, a screen share. It sounds like you're talking about something that you're kind of pointing at with your pointer and we can't see it.
Oh, okay. All my sharing, I thought I hit share screen. It's not coming up. Is that working now?
There you go.
Sorry, sorry about that. Myself, I apologize. Okay, I'm saying that. I do not have adjacent addresses and square footages, so I apologize. But these are some of the houses that are in the vicinity, like, you know, neighbors. This one is to the left. This one is to the right. This is, this one is across the street. These are on Hobart Lane, so they're quite sizable homes, so we will have to go back and and provide that information for you. I apologize, these are hand-drawn again. I've been doing this for about forty-five years, so. We do do a lot of dimensions, a lot of details, so it's very important for us to look back to historic detailing. Versus things that are being built nowadays and try to emulate that kind of thing, so. So again, as Sean talked about, the old house, let me just go back to that. The old house had a garage that came, there was a loop driveway and you came into the driveway. And you couldn't literally get in the garage, which was, which was tough, so by. Bringing the garage forward and creating this really great car court here, you know, it's kind of compact, but. This house really does meet the needs of a family of six with four children, so. This is really the the plan of the first floor. You know, a a large area for the the family to live. And then the second floor is basically bedrooms, master suite on this side. And then we do have an attic. We are only about three feet taller than the existing house, because it was quite a a large. Hip roof, so. Hard to tell, but we're 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 only a few feet taller than that. Sorry to scroll through all these, but. But the idea was to, again, look at the other homes in the neighborhood and, you know, design something that was more. Shingle style, so you will be coming into the front of the house with a portico. And the garage is entered on the side, kind of a simple garage facade. As you enter with a third bay in the back. On this side is the master suite and there's a little railing and deck there. This is the back of the garage. And as you come around, this is the rear elevation. A lot of windows, but if you stand out on their sandy cove. You will see that there, you know, most of the houses are fairly sizable. And this is the left side addition as you're facing the garage, trying to keep the garage sort of low. In kind of a gambrel shape in these. So this is the section of the the house. Again, it's not enormous when you look at how much space we have for. Seven feet. This was the bridge of the old house, so like I say, it's only about two and a half or three feet higher than that. Top of the the hip. So the original house was about fifty-one hundred square feet. And with all the additions, we are at about eighty-five hundred square feet. We cannot have a basement, but we do have a crawl space. So at least we can get, you know, some mechanical and electric down there. We won't be putting our. Our mechanicals of equipment down there, but certainly could maybe get some ductwork down there. So we feel it's a classic design. Again, the detail, the details and detailing of this house. We really try to emulate this historic details of some of the older houses in Cohasset. And, you know, will be shingles, and we feel that this is very complimentary to the neighborhood, so. These drawings, again, aren't signed, and I do not have addresses and square footages of neighbors, but we certainly can provide that.
And so so Sally, I did happen to just pull those. So forty Hobart Lane, which is the abutter on the left side, that squib gross floor according to the assessors is thirteen thousand two hundred square feet. Sixty Hobart, the Norises, is seventy-six hundred square feet. The average of those is about ten thousand four hundred square feet.
Yes. All right, so that's a really good introduction. Planning Board members, Mr. Brewer, would you like to begin?
Sure, yeah, I just wanted to point out that the Kavanaugh Consulting, that Brendan did stamp. That his his CAD-generated drawings. And again, I think the 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 certification requirement was for RGFA that. That would have been around thirty-five hundred square feet or or something that not not requiring a a large home review. In in terms of the attention to detail of of this application. I I I believe that. It's a. Vast improvement over the, was it nineteen seventy-eight or nineteen sixty-two version? Hip roof, center entrance colonial, asymmetrical design, you takes advantage of the design. Opportunities for views of the house and and I and I would say that. That this view that we're looking at right now with the with the garage, not having a big doors facing the street is. Is a is a gift to the neighborhood and the the front porch, while it may not get used by its occupants, it may. Is also a gift to the neighborhood, a visual, a visual gift. This house. You know, certainly looks like a a classic large home between, built between eighteen ninety and nineteen twenty. It's it's historically contextual in 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 a in a in a way. Substantially less kind of modern and and free-wheeling than some of its neighbors. Stylistically, it has a sense of fit on amongst itself, not just the massing. But I I didn't hear any. But I I didn't hear any discussion about lighting fixtures and I just wanted to confirm again that there's no spotlights. Shining into the neighbors bedrooms.
No, I think we, again, Sean can speak to the site lighting, but this would all be, you know, just lanterns on the house. You know, shower light, things like that, but there may be lights underneath this deck, but everything would be very low light. Around the house, that that would certainly be the the owner's intent. Even from the back, there may be sconces, but they would be carriage type lanterns that would have, you know, low voltage. Candelabra bulbs, warm light, yes.
Yep, thank you for that. And so I I I, again, I I don't see any reason not to. Approve this without conditions. It's it's another. Excellent example of of a large home that that fits its context and in fact excels what was preexisting. So thoroughly that, you know, I just. I think that's the that's really one of the main points of a large home review that. That the applicant tries really hard to to nail the nail the design. So that that works for the neighborhood as well as for their for the occupants, so I again. Those are my comments for now.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Mr. Callahan?
Is there any visible ledge being altered by this increase in size, which is? Sixty four percent by my math, but. Yeah, is there?
Is there no ledge on, there's no ledge on site?
The second thing I I. You know, as Ms. Weston was talking about building height. On the. Site plan, and I'm looking off the, you know, the planning board office site, so I can zoom. But it says, you know, the height required was thirty five feet, existing twenty seven plus or minus, proposed thirty three point seven feet. On another drawing, the hand. Drawings. I thought I saw that. The. Height was going to be forty, you know, it says, well, not not going to exceed forty feet.
Right. We're at thirty two foot nine is our ridge. So.
Well.
And it's on the section, the last sheet, so.
Yeah, this is, there's a sheet. Says proposed building section, right? So. Off to off to the right of that sketch, it says to be less than forty feet, well.
So it's thirty two foot nine inches. We're we're just stating what we're allowed to have. That was all. So we're at thirty two foot nine is our ridge height.
All right, well, I mean, just, I'm not going to make a big stink about it, but. If you're close to a a limit. If you were close to the forty foot limit, just saying it'll be less than forty foot wouldn't be acceptable to me. You know, because that doesn't tell me it's not going to exceed forty feet. But I would just state what it's actually going to be.
It does.
It is stated on that. It's thirty two feet nine inches.
All right, and then. You know, again, it just seems there's a little difference, I guess, with Kevin Arrow's chart, but. That's, you know, not a big thing, but. Everything should match, numbers should match. All right, that's all, you know, and the other thing we already discussed what I, you know, about the comparisons, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Grady?
Well, the numbers match. I think it's a very nice design and I would vote to, I'd I'd be in favor of approving it. There's no ledge, so. At this point, no, it's a nice reason for a larger overview. It's a nice design.
Do can I ask, do we need more than, I I know that Brendan was able to offer two comparisons. Do we? Is there an amount that you prefer?
Well, I, well. With all due respect, I don't want to just take it on on the fly. It's up to the, it's up to the majority of the.
No, I I understand. What's important is that we're consistent. As a board, and we typically have at least four, sometimes eight. Structures, including descriptions of the structures that the building is surrounded by. Okay. So I think we don't have Mr. Potter, so I think we, may I get a member of the board to make a motion?
Mo- motion to continue the hearing pending the additional. Square footage comparison outlined in our five point four, section D. At the end of number one.
C one A.
With with areas. Whatever else is in there.
My second.
May I? May I make a minor modification of?
To a date certain.
May I make a minor modification to the motion?
Well, we don't have a date yet, but yeah, sure.
I would ask that there be attention paid to. Clarification of the metrics that are being used on the diagram so that everybody is clear exactly how big it is and. And and what is the the containment of the structure? Are you talking about, I'm just, we do have a scale on the drawing? I I I know you do have a scale, but just.
There's also dimensions.
Just by the, excuse me, Mr. Brewer, but just. By the comment that Mr. Callahan made, there does seem to be some desire to have greater specificity. How you decide to place it on the. On the diagram is your choice, but it would be. Very nice if you think about users using the documents and trying to be thoughtful and reading them to be able to understand them and know what you mean. Okay. We'll try to clarify for you. Yes, that would be really great. Thank you very much.
Maybe if 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 I might, Ms. Glassmire, maybe a couple of overall dimensions of the of the existing structure would be adequate. You know, the the gable ends and and what 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 that overall length is and the and the width of some of the end walls. Would put. The 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 architectural plans in a context in addition to the scale of the actual drawings.
Right, okay. Are you making that as a modification?
I'm I'm explaining what might make sense in your modification for adding some some dimensional specificity on the. On the architectural drawings.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. So with that.
Why don't I just, if I can get a date that we're going to continue to, why don't I just redo the motion?
It'll be May twenty fifth at six thirty.
Okay. That the that the hearing be continued to May twenty fifth at six thirty. With the additional. Dimensions discussed and the. Context comparison analysis as outlined in our. Five point four, section D, subsection one.
Roll call, Mr. Brewer?
Hi.
Mr. Callahan?
Hi.
Mr. Grady?
Hi.
Amy Glassmire, I. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Our last item is a continuation of the discussion. On the common driveway. And Lauren, would you mind? Reminding us of where we were at the last moment when we were discussing this topic?
Yes, so at the last time that we discussed this topic, which the data is just giving me, it was in March. The the board had. Heard the opinion of council that you could consider. Adding the additional piece. At the time, there was sort of two options that you had before you for the regulation. There's the. Modifications to the existing rules and regulations for common drives as they exist, and then there's the new. Piece that adds an additional combined access regulations. At the time, given that was sort of new information since the last continued hearing date. That we could consider those combined access regulations, the board felt that they needed more time to digest that all again and resume this conversation, so. I will note, this is, this conversation originally began, I want to say in January. It's been continued a couple of times, so this is now the continuation of the hearing and you're just picking up. Back where you left off at the last time that you spoke on this and. I'll turn it back over to the board. I will note that we didn't get any. New commentary from any of the members since the last continuation date, so there's no new information since the last time. It just allowed you some additional time to digest all of that.
Thank you for that. And I I think that what we want to think about in this discussion tonight. Is whether or not we are ready to move forward on this and we've had a lot of deliberation. As Ms. Lynn said, we haven't got any new information. And so I guess the question is, do we want to move forward with this? Mr. Callahan?
I guess as the. Unofficial proponent of this change, I would like to go forward. I would like to go forward with the. Combined new regulation that both amends the common driveway regs and adds regs for non subdivision control roads. I think we've had a recent project that is. To me, the poster child of a site where this is relevant and I. I think we need to get something like this in place as soon as possible. The whole point of this is about safety. I know it was pointed out at our hearings the last time that. Well, if you require a subdivision road, it's kind of. It's going to lead to more lots being developed. And that's a function of our frontage, which is a completely different issue, but. The access regulations are designed for adequacy and safety of ways, and I think it's imperative that we. We. Amend our regulations, like, well, amend the common driveway part to not do essentially an end around the subdivision control law. And and put in some, you know, design and construction standards for non subdivision roads. And remembering that in that regulation that's proposed. Upgrade is only required if. There's added burden put on the road, so. This does not mean that existing non subdivision old roads in town are going to suddenly need to be upgraded to these standards. They can, they can remain grandfathered, they can, they can remain grandfathered at in their present condition. As long as additional burdens are not placed upon them by additional new development. And again, new development, not tear down and rebuild of existing development.
Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, um, so we last reviewed a common driveway. Upgrade. Back in back in January and what we had on the on the website. For this hearing was proposed amendment to common driveway regulations.
No, look at the combined, the combined proposal was before us in January. And then a question was brought up to our legal authority to do the. To the to do the non subdivision road part and then subsequently we got Carolyn's opinion.
So, I mean. What I what I saw was not a the combined access regulation, common driveway. Change was just the the common driveway, so are we are we talking about the changes to both tonight?
I, again, I correct me if I'm wrong, Lauren, but when we, you know. Yes, in August, it first proposed just an amendment to the existing common driveway regs. In November, I proposed a new combined regulation that would deal with both common driveways and non subdivision. Control roads. I believe we opened the hearing in January with the combined regulation.
That's correct.
A legal question was brought up of whether we could proceed with that combined regulation and that has since been answered. Like Carolyn, so we are still proceeding, as far as I know, with that. Again, unless it's the board's pleasure to just do one piece of it rather than both pieces of it, but I. The opening of the public hearing was with the combined regulations.
Okay, but but all the 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 stuff that's on the on the website for tonight, the the clean version of the common driveway. Regulations. Proposed amendment to common driveway regulations. Both dated. March twenty third and then the proposed common driveway language and public hearing notice from November. And the red line proposed common driveway regulations with town council edits from the first of, from the third of January, it looks like. I think that's, yeah, third of January. So there's no access regulations. I mean, I I under, okay, go ahead, Lauren.
You're looking at the planning board page. I know the common driveway minimum standards. The August versions are the combined version that that introduced new language. That's how we started this process. We then, at a certain point. Took that and thought, let's just introduce amendments to common drive. Then we, as Tom indicated, we got Carolyn Murray's opinion that we could do how we originally started in August. And that's why when we last spoke about this, let's say in March, that. We needed some more time that you reconsider both of them how we originally started. Or also just doing amendment to common drive as they kind of exist today. And that's where we stand today.
So. And I'm suggesting we do, we we move forward with the combined one, but again, it's to the board's pleasures to which one you want to go.
What we're. Where is the combined?
It's it's.
It's on the website, August third, twenty one.
But I I don't. I'm looking at that and and all I see is amendments to the common.
Correct, the August one is just the common driveway part. The the document that's on the website, on the. Planning Board website is red line draft proposed common driveway regulations with town council edits one, three, twenty two. That's. The combined one with Carolyn's input on.
Okay, that's the one that has both residential property access regulations from non subdivision control ways, okay?
As well, as well as common driveway, so it combines them.
Can I ask, do we feel like, and I'd had a conversation earlier with Lauren trying to sort this out. Do we feel that we have enough? Memory and. Understanding and clarification to make a decision on this item? Or should we actually have it be moved to the beginning of a meeting? Where we have the ability to be refreshed and understand exactly what we're trying to do? Because I think if we are trying to piecemeal this by talking about it, it's it's going to be really tough and.
May I suggest something? I, Clark's points are well taken and it's been continued and it might be confusing as to what we're proceeding with. And I think that it would help if I walked us through. The proposal, section by section. That requires time. We, you know, we have things we need to do on the twenty fifth. I don't know what our agenda is on the first. The the these are the occasions when I. Keep advocating that we need a third meeting just to deal with non hearing business.
And and I would actually agree with you, Tom. I think that this is significantly. Subject to just exhaustion and also lack of. Memory to be able to try to do it. Right now, so I would recommend that we we insert another meeting and deal with this item only.
What what's everybody doing next Wednesday? What what's our June schedule now, the first and the fifteenth?
The June schedule now is the first. Because we moved the meeting from the eighth. It's June first and June twenty second. We have, on June first, you have a new site plan review coming in. I think it should be relatively straightforward. It's at the Cohasset Golf Club. There's not many residential butters.
Right, and but on the twenty fifth, this month, next meeting, we're also dealing with revisions to the border street project, correct?
The tw- the twenty fifth is a very busy agenda. I would not suggest.
Right.
Is one thing, and then June twenty second, I am tentatively awaiting a large home review application, but currently have nothing scheduled.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest, I'm gonna suggest, but but you know, no, no more the excuse of confusion, haven't read it. Let's do this. I'm gonna. Let's do this, I'm gonna suggest June fifteenth. Just this, nothing else, start at six thirty. Probably, you know, we'll walk through it step by step, section by section. Uh. You know, with the, the version that's on the town website, one, three, twenty two, with Carolyn's edits, it's kind of an organizational mess. We'll keep that red line version. We'll create a clean version. And we'll go through it step by step, you know, might take an hour, might take two hours, I don't expect it would take more than two. But let's, that's what I'll suggest. The fifteenth is far enough out for everybody to look at it. Far enough out for people in the public wanna look at it to look at it. Won't worship next week, but I, it's, it's critical, you know, w- w- we had a recent project that's showing how critical this issue is, so. I don't wanna put it off.
Okay, so can I take this as a motion of Ms. Lynn?
Just have a question, and this, this may be a Carolyn question. Given that we're coming up on annual town election on Saturday, we know we're losing two members of the board who are not running for reelection. And depending on the outcome, we may not have Paul Grady with us anymore. Where does that put us? Um, you know, in in terms of, you know, you still potentially have three members who can vote. You know, where where does that leave us in terms of process and logistics of a voting quorum?
Sure, uh, you still have a quorum regardless, um, and regulations aren't like special permits where. We need the same number of people to have sat through every individual session. Of a special permit in order to be able to be qualified to vote on it. So your regulations are something that could carry over. But that being said, if I were a new member to the planning board who gets elected, um, and I'm coming into this conversation, you know. Six, nine months into it, I might feel a little bit uh handicapped, shall we say, in in that discussion. If you're going to put this off to June fifteenth. You certainly have time to advertise this again, so that no matter who is sitting on your planning board on that date. All of your members um can act on them.
Our, our one new member is gonna be in place on Saturday, and that's a lead, lead time. You know, and so I think that's sufficient. The eighteenth would be impossible. Eighteenth may be impossible.
So.
I just wanna make uh one, one more um comment in terms of the process. I, I think devoting a meeting to uh, to this makes sense. But but I, but I also uh think that um, uh. Uh, now that I know which one we're gonna be uh reviewing and potentially voting on. Um, that uh I can uh re-review what um, what's being proposed. Um, think about it a little bit, make and and make some comments that uh I send to Lauren that could be distributed. Um, and, you know, I, I just think that. We wanna be as, as prepared and understand the depth of, of what's being proposed. Um, for a good, uh, healthy, robust discussion on. Uh, on our, our, our dedicated meeting.
So I think that's the uh wish of everyone. And um, thank you for saying that, that Clark, cause it sets us up for focusing our attention on something that we would really like to clear our decks. So can I get a motion?
Uh, motion to continue uh discussion on. Um, access regulations to the seventeenth of June.
All right.
Was it, is it the fifteenth?
Yeah, it's the fifteenth.
Fifteenth of June, sorry.
Yes, and the objective, this is our, this is going to be our maiden voyage. We're gonna get this one through. Um, do, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, um, Mr. Brewer?
I.
Mr. Callahan?
Hi.
Mr. Grady?
Hi.
Amy Glassmire, I. So I just wish to say, uh, Mr. Mr. Grady, we may not know where you are. Uh, but we'll see you in the future and um, thank you for allowing me to be the chair of the planning board. I will be relinquishing that position as of Saturday. And we'll have a, a plan for the next chair, so thank you.
My, Amy, I haven't gone anywhere yet.
No, you haven't, but I'm just saying in case, I'm saying, I'm just getting it all straight, and I I wish we had had a chance to say that to to Eric as well. Okay, so.
Can I just ask Lauren a question?
Yes.
Would you rather create a clean version of this or me? I don't, I don't know if you have the time. Did, we have the red line version is up there and that's all got stuff all over the place, but I'd like to create a clean version.
I can easily create a clean version if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, no, you, you or me, I just, I, whatever, if you have the time.
I can do that. So just, just to confirm what you're looking for, you're looking for a clean version of the January third, twenty twenty two edition.
Correct, and I, I, I would, I would probably use the clean version to go through it step by step, but I want to have the red line version with. Carolyn's comments available for everybody to see uh that night, so.
Okay. All right, so it does seem that that has passed and um, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Um. Mr. Brewer?
Second. Hi.
Mr. Callahan?
Hi.
Mr. Grady?
Hi.
Amy Glassmire, I, and see you all later.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, folks.